Start the recording, please. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, April eleventh. In compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, I'd like to call this Covington City Council meeting to order. And Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltes.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Present.
Councilmember Hartzock.
Here.
Councilmember Herjahausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a farm, your honor.
Thank you, and let the record show that Councilmember Porter is joining us online. Welcome. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. With that, next is approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes tonight.
Thank you. Would that look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as posted. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We have no public communication tonight, so we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Thank you. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Please notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. And with that, looking at our sign-in list, I see nobody signed in to speak. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? We have some scholars from Kimwood High School here observing us tonight, so welcome. Thank you for being here. Is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? I don't see anybody raising their hand. With that, I'll close this first public comment period, and we'll have a second one towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C six. Promotion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Come on in. We will move into new business item number one, the two thousand twenty-two year end financial report. Casey.
Can you use the mic a little? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Right, so I'm gonna start on page two since we'll cover everything that's on page one later on here. So for property taxes for fourth quarter, the city received a little over three million dollars, and that's higher than our two thousand twenty-one collections by two point five percent. And what I will say is generally what I look at when I'm looking at property taxes for this time of year, and I'm not so much as looking at what I've collected, but what I'm collect has isn't been collected. So we have about forty-two thousand dollars that are outstanding in our receivables, and that makes up about twenty-seven thousand for two thousand twenty-two levy, and then fifteen thousand for all the other years. And King County is our collection agent, so they continue to try to collect those taxes on our behalf. But that three million dollars that we brought in for two thousand twenty-two is the two thousand twenty-two levy plus some collections from prior years. So it's kind of when I look at when I'm looking at those final property tax numbers for the year. For the real estate excise tax, I had a fantastic year. Through fourth quarter, we brought in two point three million dollars. It was a record for our REIT last year, and it's two hundred and fifty-six percent of budget, so just a massive amount of money. There were ninety-seven new home sales, three hundred and seventy-nine sale or existing home sales, two building sales, and twenty-one lot sales through fourth quarter. Oops, sorry, I forgot to scroll this. Kind of what our REIT looked like. The REIT is the the blue line for two thousand twenty-two, and you can really see how it exceeded the the previous years. So for real estate or retail sales and use taxes, again, a great year. Total collections were almost six point four million or a hundred and eighteen percent of our budget. Our fourth quarter over two thousand twenty-one, fourth quarter, retail came in higher at one percent higher, construction was higher at twenty-four point one percent. Food services were higher at four point seven percent, and all other categories increased thirteen point four percent over two thousand twenty-one levels. For total collections for the HB fourteen oh six, we were just down a little bit at forty-three thousand. We're capped on that with the state. We only receive a certain amount each year, and when we hit that amount, they stop sending the proceeds to us. And then just as a reminder, though, all of those proceeds are going to find equal place to help with rental assistance for low-income folks in our community. And then the other sales tax we have is the HB fifteen ninety. We brought in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or five point eight percent higher than last year. And also, just as I was reconciling those numbers for year-end, our current balance that we've brought in so far year-to-date for the fifteen ninety funds is one million three hundred and forty-one thousand. And also, just as a reminder, forty percent of that can be used for our mental health services, and then sixty percent of it can be used for construction. And year-to-date, we have four hundred and almost sixty-five thousand in the mental health services category, and eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in the construction. And then just as a reminder, in the mental health category, those funds are currently being used for our community care specialists. And that budget runs at about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars annually, which still leaves a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar surplus in the mental health category that we can use for for future projects or things like that. Utility taxes. So utility taxes were six point seven percent over last year. We brought in a hundred and fourteen point two percent of our budget. You can see most of the categories increased. The only one that decreased was our telephone utility taxes. And it's it seems to be stabilizing a little bit. This last year, we were only down five percent from two thousand twenty-one, when in future years, or excuse me, prior years, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one, we were down almost twenty percent year-over-year. So it's it seems like it's starting to stabilize a little bit. And then for the swim, this is our two thousand twenty-three, actually, will be our final year of scheduled rate increases. We have a nine percent rate increase built in for two thousand twenty-three. So in future years, unless we bring back another utility rate study to you, you'll see that number start to flatten out, and we'll only move construction increases moving forward. All right. So general funds. Our revenues, again, with those record sales packs that we had this last year, we're at a hundred and two point four percent of budget, so we brought in more than we were anticipating in revenues this year. And overall, our expenditures were at ninety-two point eight percent. So again, we're under budget in our expenditures, which is what we like to see, over in the revenues and under in the expenditures. And there was only one department in the general fund that was actually over its budget for the year, and since I've already had my evaluation, I will throw Regan under the bus and say it was the executive department. But I will mention.
Casey spent.
I will say it wasn't his fault. So we had voter registration fees that came in late for two thousand twenty-one, and they missed the cutoff to be accrued back to two thousand twenty-one. So we had two years' worth of voter registration fees that hit in two thousand twenty-two, so not his fault.
Casey.
Yes.
What's the special projects there? Wants them five percent of the budget to.
So those are the ARPA, not ARPA funds.
Okay.
So those are our are the projects that we were able to do with using our ARPA funds for this contract. Or just stop scrolling down again. So Public Works. The Public Works consists of the street and the swim fund. And for the street funds, we were at ninety-seven point eight percent of budget for the revenues. So under just a little bit where we were for budget, and total expenditures, we were at ninety-five percent of budget. So that was that was good. We were still under there. What we're keeping an eye on is our motor vehicle license fees. We're starting to see those kind of tick down over the last couple of years, so those were down two point five percent over last year. And I think Regan had mentioned, like, the budget workshop, as we had seen, our vehicle count has actually dropped, so something we're keeping an eye on. And for the surface water management fund, again, this is kind of where I look at the drainage utility fees at the end of the year and look to see what is uncollected. And our current swim receivable is nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars is what is outstanding. And if you'll remember, we brought you back just maybe in February, the write-off for the Bonneville Power Administration, the write-off of their interest and penalties, which allow them to pay their principal. So of that nine hundred and fifty thousand that's outstanding, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand of it is BPA, and they're working on getting that paid to us. So that will leave a balance of just about eighty-nine thousand dollars that's still outstanding, but it will be a huge, a huge bonus to us to get that receivable paid off. For our development services, our total revenue is at fifty-four percent of budget, and our total expenditures were at sixty-eight percent of budget. And as we know, as we've been talking about, quarter-over-quarter, development services have had some lower permit activity this year. The number of permits for single-family residences, we're only at twenty compared to a hundred twenty-seven in two thousand twenty-one. And for all other permit categories, we were at four hundred and twenty-five compared to six hundred and twelve in twenty-one. So we've seen some decreases there. But what I will mention is we've already seen eight single-family residential permits come in through February, whereas last year, we were only at zero in February, so definitely a trend we're hoping to see continue. For aquatics, recreation, and cultural arts, we're keeping, we're still seeing increases there due to the COVID and getting those participation numbers back up. The aquatics revenue is at a hundred and thirty-eight percent of budget, and recreation and cultural arts is at a hundred and sixty-seven percent of budget, so for future budgets, we'll be able to start increasing those budget numbers back up a little bit as we become more comfortable, so. And you can see in the splash counts how those numbers have really started to pick back up. Right, so cash and investment. So we are currently at thirty-eight point four million dollars.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
Scan on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I know you're trying to do. Thank you.
There we go. I apologize. There's the splash count that everybody can see. You can see how those are ticking now. All right, cash and investments. All right, so our largest gainers of cash over last year was general fund, the CIP, and the swim funds. And our local government investment pool is where we keep most of our surplus cash, and we're currently at twenty-nine point nine million dollars in there. And we received, or we earned four percent, four point one percent interest as of December, and I actually had to go look to make sure that wasn't a typo, and it was not. December of two thousand twenty-one, just for perspective, we earned point zero nine percent interest, so it's it's a big increase. For investments outside of the LGIP, we're currently at four point eight million, and they're all invested in government securities. All right, capital investment program. So as I was speaking earlier, the development services fund, how our permit activity was down, that directly correlates with our mitigation fees that we collect, both mitigation and a parks fee in lieu and park impact fees, so we received only almost seventy-six thousand dollars in mitigation fees and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars in park impact fees, so we're hoping to see those tick back up as permit activity picks back up for two thousand twenty-three. I won't go over all of the projects that we had, but you can see we've got some big ones going on. We've got our eleven twenty-seven SR five sixteen widening. Everybody's seeing that construction moving forward. Our two hundred and fourth connector, and also our South Covington Park, which is Founder's Park now, is update that moving forward there. And then just a couple of updated things for the bonds. These are new numbers based on the principal payment that was paid in November, so four point two million dollars is left remaining on the twenty sixteen bonds. And we only have two payments left on the Public Works Trust Fund loan, so that's pretty exciting, this year and next year, and then that's completed. And then impact fees, we currently have a balance of one point three million. And those fees, along with the interfund loan there on the left, are what we're using as cash flows to complete some of these CIP projects as we wait for the grant reimbursements to come back in. And that is all I had. I've not been to any questions anybody has.
Does council have any questions for Casey?
Just had a comment. I guess on the retail sales and use tax, I remember seeing in some of Regan's weekly updates that there was a downturn in some of our retail sales, but it still came
One percent.
ahead, you know, in the in December. I think that's that's interesting. So one of the months must have had a really incredible sales. And then what I also think is interesting, these graphs continue to go up. Curious to see where we are next year, but it doesn't appear that COVID had much impact on our retail sales, so.
We were pretty fortunate where we had the big, the hand depots, the front mires, and everybody was out doing their yard work and house house improvements, so. Yeah, we had some great years.
And I can't see Beth. Did you have a question? I can't see you on there.
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else have any questions for Casey? Casey, thank you very much for the detailed report. Greatly appreciate it. I look forward to hearing those every quarter.
All right, next is new business item number two. Review the compensation philosophy in comparable cities for next salary survey. Turn it over to Noreen. Welcome, Noreen. Been a while.
Yes, it has been a while, but it seems like yesterday. Well, good evening, mayor and council. It is time for our five-year salary survey again. And for the first time in fifteen years, we will actually have a consultant perform it, and it's because we have a lot more physicians. The labor market is really strange right now because of COVID and very volatile economy, so it is very helpful to have a specialist devote a lot of time to this. So what we are doing, what the leadership team has done, is review the compensation philosophy as well as the comparable cities. So those are two less things that the consultant has to do. And the good news is that there were no changes to our compensation philosophy, save one comma from the grammar policeman who is our city attorney. So it only changed by one comma since the last time. It's upheld in over those years. So while that stays the same, change some of the cities in our comparable market. So what we looked at this time was to make sure the population was as similar as you can possibly get, that most of the primary market is, or the primary comparables are council-manager forms of government, and most of them also contract with police. So but we did choose a more dynamic mix of cities, and we eliminated those from Pierce County because of all the activity that's going on in the city. So you will see that we now are recommending the use of Baco, Issaquah, Maple Valley, Sammamish, Sea-Tac, and Shoreline, and Maple Valley and Issaquah, like two carryovers from the primary comparable market, and Shoreline is a carryover from the alternate market. And then for for additional cities or additional cities, and it happens to be four this time around, that can be used if adequate matches aren't made from the primary market, we've now chosen Federal Way, Kent, Lynwood, and Tukwila. And Federal Way and Lynwood are carryovers from the alternate comparable market from the last time. And we've added Kent and Tukwila. And most of the cities we've added at one time or another were in the comparables. So the only one I believe we haven't used at some point in the past twenty-five years is Sea-Tac. So tonight, you know, we're hoping that you will authorize the use of these comparable cities for the consultant when they do the salary survey.
Thank you, Noreen. Does council have any questions for Noreen? All right, if there are no questions, I'd look for a motion to adopt the recommended updates to the employee compensation procedure.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the recommended updates to the employee compensation procedure. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think it's a good idea that we bring in this consultant and bringing in this, changing the procedure allows us to do this, but it also allows us to find if we're doing the right thing with our compensation and how to adjust it to make sure we're being competitive in a very competitive job market at this moment, so.
Thank you, Bill. Jennifer, would you like to speak for your second?
Just to add that retaining top talent is something that we should strive for, and this is part of that process.
Thank you. Do anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommended updates to the employee compensation procedure. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Noreen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, it brings us to, at the end of our new business, brings us to future agenda items. Please look that, actually, for interviews, we'll be starting now at five twenty on April twenty-fifth. We have five interviews now that day, and then our council meeting starts at seven, so our potential council meeting, you can see on pages one hundred and one oh one, of potential items that we will be addressing. And we'll be honoring Pat Patterson for his retirement that day.
He's not allowed to retire. What are we gonna do without him?
Yeah. Does council have anything they would like to see on a future agenda? Then let's move into council staff comments. We'll start with Adam. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sent a quick report on our community care specialist. As we've been getting a little better integrating him, we've had some some good successes. An example was the vehicle that was mentioned in the Covington connects has been a problem at the Walmart lot. The police had dealt with them several times. Usually ended them in screaming at us and not, you know, not because the officers were being aggressive or anything, they were just asking to leave because they'd been called by a business. In this case, Darren went out and connected him with services, so he's now housed, not sleeping in his car and is working toward getting a job. And so a great success on that, because that was something that the police had tried several times and failed, and I presume that he just didn't like. Big kudos to Darren, but we're very happy to have him solve this problem. That's it.
Thanks, Adam. I'll go to Dawn. Welcome.
Tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Ethan.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ethan. Selena.
Good evening, council. Nothing from me either. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll go to Noreen.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen. Casey.
No, I'm nothing from me. Thank you.
All right. Mark.
No executive session and nothing from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Regan.
I have something.
No, please.
Make it quick.
Regan's got seven thirty-three. Even later, so. No, just for council beware of our Arbor Day celebration. Our Parks and Rec Department is planning for April twenty-eighth at Jenkins Creek Park and County Park. Jennifer was out there with the Girl Scouts last year, so this is always a really great event and a wonderful time to come plant some trees and support our Arbor Day celebration. That's all. I've got more, but that's all.
Go ahead.
I don't want Jennifer to be mad.
I got time.
No, really, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Krista.
Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Christina.
Just looking forward to a skip meeting next week, and nothing from me. Enjoy the introduction spring.
Thank you. Beth.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to say thank you again to Casey for the presentation, and it's always encouraging. I understand the conservative nature of a lot of the the revenue sources, and it's always nice when things come in better than expected. It makes us feel a little bit better about the state of the the budget, and we, I know I can speak for myself. I really appreciate your your thoroughness, and when we have these wonderful moments, it's 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 better to under-promise and over-deliver than the other way around, so certainly appreciate that. But that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Beth. Sean.
Yeah, just a couple of things. We have the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority meeting last Wednesday. I guess the major news to come out of that is we, or did pass motion to annex Tukwila into the RFA. So they are now part of the contract for service, and I guess that next step will be for the city to actually vote on incorporating them as well, but the RFA continues to expand and provide service to even more people. Although I did meet with the chief this week, just he's kind of making the rounds on meeting electeds to just kind of introduce himself and ask him if there ever was a point when the RFA would get too big, and he responded by saying he was recently on a call with chiefs, and the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority was the smallest, and the next smallest fire department was Seattle on there, so I guess there, we've got a, we got a lot of room to grow if we want to, so anyway, I thought that was interesting. I thought we were pretty darn big, so anyway. That's it.
Thank you, Sean.
Was hoping for some better weather over the next few days so we can get our filming segments done. I think a few of us were scheduled during the monsoon yesterday, and they got rescheduled tomorrow, so keep your fingers crossed we can get this done.
Yes, I've been rescheduled to tomorrow. And kudos to city staff, you know, they're at the soccer camp yesterday. Yeah, that's it's brutal. But that's it. Nothing else.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe?
I'm just looking forward to my first in-person PIC meeting in three years tomorrow night. I told you I was gonna send you the packet, and I looked at the packet, and it's all just a bunch of updates mainly about the legislative session, which we all get, and then levy renewals, and we even get to talk about wastewater, so I figured you all could be spared that, so. Other than that, let's hope for better weather, and I hope everyone's enjoying spring break with their kids.
Thank you, Joe. A couple of things. Last Friday, Jennifer and I had the pleasure of going with Cedar Valley kids to Jenkins Creek to release the salmon into the creek, and the part that we traveled was pretty clean and looked good. I know there was one bridge that still has some interesting things underneath it, the very, the bridge going from the new lot going into the park, so. But I know you guys, the team, have been working on that, but the kid were very excited to release the salmon into the creek, so better we can't tag them to see if they come back. They're a little bit too small for that. As you know, in the fall, we do a mayor's day of concern, and the storehouse with the rules that have changed federally for funding for people to get food has decreased. People that were getting five hundred dollars a month are now getting zero for food, and everybody, it's everybody's done differently. So the storehouse is getting a lot more people with what they say thirty. Would, would they say thirty families a week extra about?
New families.
New families.
Last week, we hit seventeen hundred individuals.
So, um, so the storehouse is trying to keep up. They're doing good. So on May sixth, we are going to do a May awards day of concern, um, at Safeway. That was Jennifer did a really good, Jennifer legged, you know, so it's going to be at Safeway and also at Dollar Tree. Uh, so you can go on to the signup genius. Krista sent that out. You can sign up if you are available to help. I know some of you already signed up. And then I believe, um, Real Life Church is giving a oil change day for those that sign up that need it, need help with that. And then on May thirteenth is the, uh, post office, um, food drive. That you can leave food out at the, your mailbox for them to pick up to help with, uh, the storehouse. Uh, that is all I have tonight. So we'll move into our second public comment period of the evening. Speakers, every time I read this, I think of you, Joe.
Yeah, all I said was I think it's cool that this was added. That's all I said.
No, and, and it's added for very good reason for those online. So speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel this evening? Alright, is there anybody online wishing to address counsel? Seeing nobody, um, raised their hand and nobody come to the podium, I will call this meeting adjourned at seven thirty-two.